Hello, everyone. Welcome to the Decaturish.com Clarkston City Council Forum. I am your host, editor and publisher, Dan Wizenhut. Thank you for joining us today. If you're watching this on Twitch. Elections are November 7th. Early voting is going to be October 16th, so mark your calendars for that. We are going to introduce our candidates really quick. Running in this race are Awet Iasu, who is not here, but he may join us in a minute. Councilmember Laura Hopkins, councilmember, hello.
Hello. Good morning.
Good morning. Vice Mayor Deborah Johnson, hello. Good morning.
Good morning.
Krista Durant, I don't believe has made it. Charles, Dr. Charles Jenkins, hello.
Good morning.
Good morning. Dean Moore, Dean, how are you?
I'm fine, thank you.
And Mark Perkins, how are you?
Doing well, thanks.
I should note that Dean and Moore, Dean Moore and Mark Perkins are both former Clarkston City Council members. For people keeping track of that sort of thing. So the way that this is going to work is we're going to give each candidate two minutes to make an opening statement. I'm going to do my best to rotate between the candidates. It might be a challenge, but we're going to, we're going to figure that out. And then we're going to go right into questions and I'm going to be keeping time at home. So we are going to start, I want to make sure that we keep our list tidy here. We are going to start with Vice Mayor Deborah Johnson. Vice Mayor, you have two minutes to make an opening statement.
Thank you, Dan. I want to start by thanking you for hosting this forum. My name is Vice Mayor Deborah Johnson for the city of Clarkston, and I have been on council four years and up for reelection. The reason I wanted to be on council was to be a different, to make a difference in our community. We are a very diverse community, and I saw some things that needed to change, and I wanted to be a part of that change. And right now, I'm still concentrating on transparency. We still have a lot of work to be done there. And inclusiveness, we need to include every aspect of our community in the decision-making and not just a random few. Meaning we have several voices that could be heard. So if we get the transparency part together, we're going to make big changes here in the city. So I just wanted to continue to be a part of that effort. Thank you, Dan.
Councilmember Hopkins, question is to you, or rather, it's your turn to make your opening statement, two minutes.
Okay, thank you for the opportunity. I am currently on the city council, and the reason that I ran and the reason that I am running again is to promote the well-being of the people of Clarkston, just in the that's the long and the short of it. There's a lot of ways that a local government like our city council can have a huge impact on that from traffic to public safety to the parks, but we also have to be very mindful of the mechanics as to what we can and can't do. We can't, it's very easy to sit back and play quarterback and say, oh, if I was in charge, I would do this and I would do that, but we can't directly, we have to work through our tools of the city charter, the city budget and the city manager. And so I feel that I have the experience in operating with those type of tools in setting out operating procedures, in setting out budgets to meet the goals to improve the quality of life for everybody in Clarkston. We have some very particular challenges in Clarkston, the management of the zoning particularly, which could basically turn all of Clarkston into one large apartment complex. And we are trying to promote homeownership and long-term financial stability for the people of Clarkston, and that is something that can only be done through the council and through the zoning code. So with the help of our constituents, I'm hoping to promote the well-being of our residents, not just for today, but for the next thirty, forty years and for your families going forward. Thank you.
Dr. Charles Jenkins, you have two minutes to make your opening statement.
So to start, I want to thank you for granting me the opportunity to appear before you today as a candidate for Clarkston City Council. As a lifelong resident of Georgia, I bring a unique perspective to this, perspective to this forum. I've had the privilege of witnessing the diverse tapestry of our community and understanding the intricate needs and aspirations of our residents. It's this deep connection and understanding that fuels my desire to serve and contribute to the betterment of our beloved city. Throughout my career as a psychologist, I have dedicated myself to helping individuals achieve their fullest potential, helping them navigate challenges and foster positive change. I'm committed to applying the same expertise to the role of city councilman, doing, doing so by advocating for the mental health and well-being of our residents and ensuring that our community is a place where everyone can thrive. Having grown up in Georgia, I understand the unique challenges and opportunities that our state presents. I've seen firsthand the resilience and strength of our community as well as suppressing issues that we face. From enhancing access to mental health resources to promoting youth development and education, to supporting local businesses and fostering economic growth, I'm deeply committed to addressing these issues head-on. Furthermore, as a lifelong resident, I have a vested interest in preserving the rich history, heritage and unique character of our community. I believe in the power of effective urban planning, responsible development and sustainable practices to help our city so that we can continue to be proud to call Clarkston home. If elected as your city councilman, I'll be an advocate for each and every resident by prioritizing transparency, open communication and collaboration. I work tirelessly to ensure that our voices are heard and concerns are addressed. Together, we can build a community that only supports the physical infrastructure, but also nurtures the emotional and psychological well-being of our residents. So in conclusion, I come before you as a candidate who brings a deep understanding of human psychology, a lifelong commitment to the great state of Georgia and unwavering dedication to the betterment of our community.
Thank you. Thank you. That's your two minutes. Dean Moore, two minutes to make your opening statement.
Well, I've been involved with the city of Clarkston since 2007. I was on the zoning and review committee. At that time, had an excellent opportunity to observe what the city functioned, or how the city functioned. And in 2010, actually elected in 2009, but in 2010, I became a councilman. We changed our form of government to the current form we have now, the city council manager form of government. We hired our first city manager in 2011. We found resources to do the projects that we have done in these past ten years or so. And I want to continue that. We've got a situation right now where we're looking at the Greenways connectivity of the city. I think it was in 2016 or 2017, our city manager at that time, who was our firm city manager, he was here for seven years, I want to add, but he had gotten a grant for $40,000 to examine our connectivity and we're in the process of forming committees and feedback and getting that stuff done. And I want to be a part of that. More recently, since I lost an election in 2017, I've been on the Historic Preservation Commission and continue to provide feedback and opportunities within the city to make sure we move forward in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mark Perkins, you will have two minutes to make your opening statement.
Thanks, Dan. So when I first ran for city council in Clarkston, I was serving a, the end of someone else's term. It was just a nine-month appointment. And I felt like I owed the community a little bit of an explanation of why I didn't run for reelection and why it was so short. And that's because we experienced a life-threatening situation with my two youngest daughters. We had twins. And in that process, I decided I couldn't, you know, manage a campaign, run for reelection at the same time, you know, serving in the role that I was already elected to serve. You know, and back then, you know, I ran to, you know, help foster environments where we could solve the problems that the community was facing and encourage long-term strategic thinking. You know, we've seen a lot of potential in Clarkston. We have a tremendous amount of potential, a lot to offer that we often don't tap into because we, we don't have that culture of collaborative problem solving on our council. And you know, in other areas of the city, and when we do encourage that type of culture, that type of environment, you know, I think we've seen in COVID when people really were able to overcome their differences. It, the creativity and the things that we were able to accomplish together were pretty incredible. So I bring a lot of organizational leadership experience to the table. I've worked on a number of cross-functional teams. I spent my childhood overseas. And you know, even in those nine months, you know, a couple of members of the current council, you know, even said that I accomplished more in the community in nine months than some people do in nine years. My hope is to be entrusted again with that leadership responsibility by the community just to continue to grow our community in healthy ways that make it a better place for our kids and families.
Thank you. All right, we're on to our first question. Starting with councilmember Johnson. There are several candidates in this race. I can, by my count, three, four, five, six, seven, I think eight, seven or eight candidates in this race. So there's a lot of interest. Do you understand why people in Clarkston, so many people in Clarkston are unhappy with their government right now? And why there are so many people running in this election? And if so, what do you plan to do about it if you're reelected? You have two minutes.
Thank you, Dan. Yes, I do understand why there are so many people in this race and I am very aware of past incidences that would have encouraged someone to want to change the current administration. Based on the nature of those issues, current council were basically told to remain silent based on the nature of the events and if it's fair to say, the players of the game. So there are a lot of things that the community were not privy to. And even today, I can't talk about certain things. So yes, if I feel that some community leaders as well as members feel that we could have handled some things a little differently. Unfortunately, we had to take all resources and treat them as fragile as they were because we had several people that would have been affected by a sudden sporadic decision. So yes, I encourage everyone to put their best foot forward. I, I plan to continue doing the work that I've been doing, which is engaging with the community, assisting with public safety concerns, and now a search for a new city manager. So yes, I encourage everyone to I do apologize, to yeah, ask the questions. Because some of them we can answer and some of them we cannot. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you. Councilmember Hopkins, same question to you. I'll summarize. A lot of people running in this election, do you understand why people, there are a lot of people in Clarkston who are upset and frustrated with their government right now? And if you're reelected, what do you plan to do about it? You have two minutes.
It's very easy to understand why people are frustrated with the Clarkston City Council. We became aware of a problem, internal problem in our government around April. And there's the reasons that we did not become aware before then is because of the setup according to Georgia Municipal Association, that city council members should only interact with members of the city government through the city manager. And it was concerns with the city manager that led to all of the turmoil that was going on in city government. But from the time we became aware to the time that the problem was corrected, it was a matter of a couple of months. And I don't think that's an unreasonable timeframe considering that our former city manager, it was her first, excuse me, first city manager position, and she had been with us as director of planning. So for a total of like eight years. So a change there would have been significant and was worthy of taking seriously and with careful consideration. She did choose to resign the position and so the city and she could all move forward peacefully. But I think that's one of the reasons why everyone is concerned. But it's also worth noting that three of the people running are incumbents. Two others are former city councilors, so fully aware. So there are two or three people in here who haven't previously been members of the Clarkston City Council. So I honestly think personally, every person whose face I see on my screen right now, with the exception of Mr. Wizenhut, I would be very happy to see on our city council. So I think we have a lot of good council members here, a lot of good potential council members and a lot of people with the right concerns.
Thank you. Dr. Jenkins, the question is to you. There are a lot of people running in this race. There are quite a few people in Clarkston who are upset with their government right now. Do you understand why they're upset? And if you're elected, what do you intend to do about it? You have two minutes.
So as a member of the community, I think some of the comments that you just heard lend to the unhappiness with how city council is proceeding right now. It just, there's a perceived lack of ineffective governance. Even I understand, as the council members have mentioned, that there's information that can't be shared. The community should not be getting this information from, no disrespect to you, but from Decaturish first, from WSB, from Atlanta first. We shouldn't be hearing about this away in city hall on the news. This lack of transparency, particularly around how the previous city manager was hired. In that note that we just heard, that it was her first city manager position, there's some concern there. So I think as a citizen, as a resident, I feel that my concerns, and I think I could speak for some of the other community members, that our concerns have not been adequately addressed. Progress has not been made on important matters and that our current council is not transparent enough. They may desire more openness and clear communication. And I think that a new iteration of the council would be able to provide those opportunities.
Thank you very much. Dean Moore, the same question to you. There are a lot of people running. A lot of people are dissatisfied with their city government right now. Do you understand why they are dissatisfied? And if you're elected, what do you intend to do about it? You have two minutes.
Well, sure. The, the reason people are outraged is because the police department were losing personnel. And the city manager was doing nothing about it. So getting rid of the city manager, I believe, has helped solve that problem. And now we are offering incentives for hiring and continuing to build our police force back up. I mean, anytime you lose your security in your community, you feel threatened and that's why everybody's upset. Yes, I think the council is moving in that direction to make sure that we maintain our police force at the very least. And we are in the process of hiring a new city manager. I was involved in hiring the first city manager. We really did not know how to go about that. I'm a construction superintendent, but I don't do the human resources part of it. So in hiring somebody for an important position like city manager, I sought outside help and advice and actually formed a committee with the help of the council that had two city managers, a city attorney, a former director of the cab board of health and another local resident who had a bachelor's degree in economics and a master's degree in public administration helped us walk through the, the resumes we had. We had thirty-eight applicants for the first city manager. I don't expect we'll be getting that for a, a position that's down the line. So yeah, I'm looking forward to getting involved in hiring the next city manager to make sure that we can move forward into the future safely. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Perkins, question is to you. There are a lot of people in, running in this race. A lot of dissatisfaction and upset people in Clarkston right now as it concerns their city government. Do you understand why people are upset? And if you're elected, what do you intend to do about it? Two minutes.
I think Stan, I think there are a number of reasons that people are upset. I think fundamentally, it does come down to a lack of timely communication and clear communication from the part of the council. I disagree that people in the community don't have access to all the facts. Anyone in the community can submit open records requests and a lot of the things that have come to light through the various outlets that have, you know, been reporting, you know, we're not talking about tabloid journalism here. We're talking about outlets who have reputations, they have liability concerns, you know. You know, I don't have to lecture you, you know, I'm not going to lecture you on your, your own field, but these, these stories that came out were based on facts. They were based on open records requests. They were based on access to emails. So I think when we have things like shootouts and one of our major parts, you know, that, that go, you know, I would say unaddressed, when, when you start looking through email exchanges, when you start looking through the records that are available. Some of this stuff isn't even, you know, directly connected to the public outreach. It's the story behind the scenes of, of how things were being managed and how things were being done. People have concerns about their safety. They have concerns about whether or not when they call 911, is somebody going to show up? And we have officers showing up at, you know, our city council meetings saying that they don't have backup, that they're injured. You know, that's, that's a serious issue. You know, as a dad with, with kids, you know, and just even as a community member, you know, I want to know that our community is, is safe. And so when I bring up these questions, we're not talking about, you know, an event, we're talking about the fundamental services that the city has, is obligated to provide. I, I think that's why people are upset. There are other areas. I mean, I think we could look at some of the ongoing maintenance issues, things like that. But fundamentally, if we're not providing public safety, we're not doing our job.
Thank you. Moving on to our next question, we'll start again with Vice Mayor Johnson. Vice Mayor Johnson, if you were elected, what will you do to rebuild trust between the city and its residents? You have two minutes.
Thank you, Dan. I would start by making sure that all of our information, our website, everything is transparent. We have a need for a communications person or team right now, and we are working on hiring. So what we would do is we just make sure that everyone is aware of what's going on. The information is available in multiple languages and on several outlets. The website, Facebook page, et cetera. And we would make sure that the communication between council, city, city manager, mayor goes out to the community a little more effectively. We have some things in place where we're working on measures of communication with, with our community. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you. Councilmember Hopkins, the question is to you. If you are elected, reelected, what will you do to rebuild trust between Clarkston and its residents? Two minutes.
I think that the trust between Clarkston and its residents, it's a time for healing for Clarkston right now after what we just went through. But building trust between the residents and the government has a lot to do, ties hand in hand with the trust between the council and the city manager. And I think at this point, regardless what Georgia Municipal Association says, I think the city council needs to address its position as an employer of record of the city manager, as it would any other employee, including regular 360 evaluations, which include objective third-party surveys of city employees to ensure that the city environment is one that we can be proud to say, people work here, people work for us. They're proud to say, I'm with the city government, and that's not something that they should, they should be ashamed of. I think in an environment of progressive discipline, sort of famously with yours and every other publication, a disciplinary action of a senior department head should never make headlines because in progressive discipline, they should always know it's coming and know exactly what the consequences of their actions are. So if, if it is as out of the normal as it was, that it makes headlines, then right there, something is wrong and we are not being a fair, stable, transparent employer. And I think we need to be, among other things, a good employer. And also, we need to up our communication significantly with our residents. Last night, we voted, while we discussed at the work session in continuing to engage a public relations firm to keep communications with the public going.
Thank you. Dr. Jenkins, question is to you. If you are elected, what will you do to rebuild trust between the city of Clarkston and its residents? You have two minutes.
So I, I think hiring the outside firms is a, is a good idea. But right now, there's this sense of exclusion and frustration among residents. There's this perception of favoritism, some unethical behavior and a lack of transparency and accountability. So third parties, outside firms can help with the perception of the city. City council, it, we need a fresh slate of, or a blank page for city council. City council that's willing to foster an environment of transparency by providing clear and accessible information about their policy decisions, budget allocations and government actions. There's plenty of information that can be made public, that was not made public in the previous, during the previous situations. Regular town hall meetings, whether they're one-on-ones, whether there are two council members performing or holding these town hall meetings and providing opportunities for public input. I'm in favor of providing the community with periodic progress reports. You know, these meetings need to be held with the ear of active listening, active engagement and genuine empathy and understanding. I think it's, I can speak for myself, or I will speak for myself, rather, attending city council meetings. I don't, I have not felt at every meeting that there's a genuine sense of empathy and understanding towards the concerns and experiences of residents. So I think taking the time to listen and acknowledging the challenges that face our community could help commit, demonstrate a commitment to addressing community needs.
Thank you. Dean Moore, the question to you. If you are elected, what will you do to rebuild trust between the city of Clarkston and its residents? Two minutes.
Well, I think town hall meetings is going to be important the next several months, if not years, to get people at different times to get involved and give us feedback. Attending council meetings is fine. I've always encouraged people to go to the work sessions because that's where you can comment on the different items on the agenda that we will be voting for in the following week. The following week, when it's time to vote, I think everybody's pretty well made up their mind what they're going to do and any feedback you may have. It's only, you only have three minutes to give any information about the entire agenda. So having people out in the community, when I was a councilman before, I would get invitations to different events and different meetings and different people would contact me about things going on and I would try to attend all of those. I encourage everybody on council, whoever does get elected, to answer those calls and go into the community. You'll find a, a great resource and the people of Clarkston are our most valuable commodity that we have to communicate with and to make sure that they're taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Perkins, if you were elected, what will you do to rebuild trust between the city of Clarkston and its residents? Two minutes.
Thanks. Yeah, I think just highlighting a point that was already made, you can't outsource leadership culture. And you can outsource processes, you can outsource things that, you know, that will communicate what information is available. But messaging comes from, you know, your leadership team, whether that's an organization or a company or a city council. You know, and so I think rebuilding trust is, it is a part of a slow, you know, in, in any relationship when trust has been broken, you know, it's, it's hard to do anything else. You really have to take a step back, you know, whether that's a marriage or a friendship, you know, or again, a city government and, and work to regain that trust. And, and the, the way of doing that again is, is to engage in active listening. You know, just a general principle to, you know, not be condescending when people engage with you on things, to not dance around, you know, the bush, you know, so to speak, when, when people are asking you questions that pertain to the services they're receiving, the services they're paying for. And in, in to not run away from journalists when they ask questions, you, you can't, you don't have to ask and answer every single thing. But I think, you know, just making an effort is, it, you know, goes a long way. You know, we mentioned town halls and forums, I think, continue to improve on our city website, on translation services through
Um, you know, we mentioned town halls and forums, I think, continue to improve on our city website, on translation services that are available. Things where, you know, people don't get the sense that we're doing things in the dark. Um, that, that's important, you know, these are general principles that, you know, are going to play out in a number of different circumstances. But I, I think that's the first step, it's re-establishing a culture of transparency and the culture that people engage with when they engage with somebody on council or the city staff.
Thank you. Uh, Clarkston's town halls tend to be exciting, so as a newspaper publisher, uh, that's very delightful to hear there, everyone wants to hold more of them, I think that's great. Uh, keep, keep doing that. Um. Okay, Vice Mayor Johnson, uh, starting with you again. Do you think Clarkston should have a dedicated human resources department? Why or why not? Two minutes.
Thank you, Dan. Yes, I do think that we need a dedicated human resource department. That was actually one of the issues that I addressed my first year on council. I could not get the support I needed um to get that in full swing, but what we're doing now, based on past experiences, we are looking into outsourcing our HR department, giving our can um employees, staff, a better resource when it comes to issues. My question has always been, what happens when someone has a issue with their leader? And they have to report it to their leader. And according to our charter, city staff cannot contact council directly. So yes, I, I totally support it. I hope this time around, we get it together. There's an urgent need now. Um, so I totally support outsourcing our HR department. Thank you, Dan.
Uh, Councilmember Hopkins, uh, do you think Clarkston needs its own human resources department? Why or why not? Two minutes. You're, you're on mute, Councilmember.
With between fifty and sixty employees, we definitely warrant a human resources person. Um, that is just a lot of paperwork and it usually falls on the department heads and uh, the city manager to do that. And it's uh just the workload definitely warrants a human resources person. On top of that, though, I do think we need to continue doing and third-party outsourced um culture surveys. And to find out how we can make uh the best environment, best climate for people to work. And also, we've had that situation in the past where the city manager did their own, so actually multiple times with multiple city managers, did their own culture survey, had sent out a survey to all the employees and asked it, them to turn it in to themselves. Where employees are expected to write their thoughts about their supervisor and hand it to their supervisor, which obviously is not going to work. So um, I think that any professional work environment should have that. Um, sort of a third-party ombudsman where responses can be anonymized and turned directly to the city council. Um, but a human resources department in an organization our size would really be one person. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Dr. Jenkins, the question is to you. Do you think Clarkston needs a human resources department? Why or why not? Two minutes.
I think we do. Uh, I'm in favor of a human resources department. I'm not in favor of relinquishing control over important HR processes to a third party. Uh, there's no guarantee that a, outside party would uh be able to have the deep understanding of our city's unique culture and values and goals. We could, you know, they could always put on paper that they plan to align their strategies with our overall objectives, but uh, and I understand that there, there are cost-saving measures that uh are pros for outsourcing HR functions. But I do think that we should have a HR department and it should be uh a city department.
Thank you. Uh, Dean Moore, two minutes. Do you think Clarkston should have an HR department? Why or why not?
I think it'd be great. Yeah, that's um one thing that, that we are lacking right now. Um, as far as the communication between employees with the council, I think that the original setup was to prevent council members from going into different departments and directing people to do things. And with the HR department, I think that everybody can, can come together and understand what those types of problems would create or do create. And so I'd like to see a separation again to keep council members from going in and talking to the employees and trying to direct people. But I think it's important that the employees have the opportunity to talk to the council. If there are things going on, as we've had in the past, I think it should be that they are able to talk to us about the abuses that may be taking place. And if we have a HR department, then, then that uh certainly sets up a, a better um, a better channel to go through. But i- until we do, I'm hoping that the council will be able to talk to people within the city that are working for us in the city. And like I, like, like has been mentioned earlier, uh, we are the employer of the, uh, of the staff.
Thank you. Uh, Mark Perkins, do you think Clarkston needs an HR department? Why or why not? Two minutes.
Yeah, so I think this, honestly, I could go either way on this. Um, I think fundamentally, um, you know, we are a small municipality. And so there are certain processes that you could handle internally when it comes to HR. Um, I think regardless of whether or not we outsource this or bring someone on full-time as a dedicated HR person, you know, right now that falls under responsibility of the city clerk. Um, we do need a clear with a lower process. Um, I will say, y- you know, Dean is right. Um, it is not, there's nothing in our charter that prohibits a, an employee or a member of the staff of the city from talking to a member of council. Again, the problem is the council member directing staff or um instructing them, giving them orders, right? And so that, that's been, I think, a misconception historically with members of council. And you know, I've heard that from a number of people, I've been told that, you can't talk with the language of the charter. People can bring issues up to you and, and I, I think that is really important. It's important that people are able to, you know, raise their hand and say, hey, I, I'm seeing something that's not right. Um, I've had members of staff approach me on issues. Um, but again, I think there needs to be a process. Someone's raising an issue, it can't turn into this, you know, evidence, you know, it is, there's got to be some evidence behind it. There has to be some kind of formal process to evaluate that versus it just being a matter of, of who you know and, and sort of whispers and, you know, through back channels. So um, I definitely need, you think we need to improve our processes, whether or not that's, you know, internally or you, you know, by bringing on an external firm, I, I think there, there's a number of other things to consider there. Um, and again, pri- primarily, I do think there should be some external review. You shouldn't be handling, uh, you know, your review of your supervisor to your supervisor, that, that's just unhealthy on so many different levels. And so even if it's something as simple as bringing in uh a third party to conduct anonymous reviews of staff culture, I think that's a wise thing to do.
Thank you. Uh, Vice, Vice Mayor Johnson, uh, next question, starting with you. Uh, in the Q and A's, uh, which is what we based a lot of our questions for this on, uh, several of the candidates said they were in favor of annexation, i.e. bringing unincorporated areas of DeKalb County into Clarkston. So uh, make your case. Why should a citizen of, of an unincorporated DeKalb County want to join the city of Clarkston? Two minutes.
Thanks, Dan. Um, well, I feel that incorporating with Clarkston would be beneficial for certain areas. Now, we have areas that have came before us before and do not want to annex. So right now, I would have to say it would give them more safety. Um, the response from DeKalb County is just not as great in the unincorporated areas. So they will have immediate access to our police, um, and all of our resources. Um, the, our mileage rate compared to DeKalb County's is not that far off, but it, it would be a difference um in upkeep and things of that nature, Dan. Um, but with some of the issues that we have had going on, it's going to be a tough fight to encourage the um unincorporated areas to actually come into Clarkston at this time. So we got to start with building that trust and um showing them that we are stable enough to incorporate them into the city.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Councilmember Hopkins, same question. We had several candidates that said they were in favor of annexing more unincorporated areas into the city. So, so make the case. Why, why, if I live in an unincorporated area, which I do actually, uh, why, why should I want to join uh the city of Clarkston? You have two minutes.
Um, the first meeting, actually the inaugural meeting, when Councilwoman Johnson and I were inaugurated, actually started twenty minutes late because the previous mayor was trying to convince us to vote for an annexation. And um at the time, we had that meeting at the uh Clarkson Community Center because there were so many people there. And we thought we must be the most popular council in the history of Clarkson. There was hundreds of people that showed up for our inauguration. And then came to find out that they had also proposed to annex everything from North DeKalb Mall to darn near Macon, I believe. And um, there's so many people were there to object to that, both residents of Clarkston and people in the areas to be incorporated. And um, we refused to vote for it. And um, then once we said we weren't going to vote at the meeting, all of the people got up and left. So obviously, the subject of annexation is highly controversial, both within the areas of currently incorporated Clarkston and the unincorporated areas. So there's the issue of can we offer those people more for their tax money than they're getting from DeKalb County? And at that time, we had a police force that wasn't certified. We didn't have any recycling services. There were several other services that they were getting from DeKalb that they wouldn't get from us. Um, and there were several people at Clarkston who said that they wanted to continue to be a small sort of uh green town and did not want to turn into a big city, and they were never consulted on that. So I think anything topic of annexation needs to have significant resident input, both from the current residents of Clarkston and the areas to be incorporated. When it goes on a referendum, it's only those people in the to-be-incorporated areas that get to vote.
Thank you. Dr. Jenkins, uh, the question is to you. Uh, several candidates expressed support for the idea of annexation. Uh, I live in an uh unincorporated area, why should I want to join the city of Clarkston? You have two minutes to make your case.
So I have my personal opinion of annexation and then I have the more of a perspective of how a city council member should approach it. So I, I know that there's a lot of benefits to annexation, uh, depending on which areas are annexed. It can increase the overall tax base, uh, which can be used to fund all these essential services and infrastructure that we've been discussing, as well as the parks and recreation, uh, improving the schools within our boundaries. But that being said, if the citizens of Clarkston and the citizens of the areas that we want to annex don't have any buy-in to the plan, then we don't need to do it. Uh, so again, I, I might have my own personal, you know, opinions of how it can increase and stimulate our local economic growth, uh, create job opportunities. But I wouldn't push that on a city or constituents that are not in favor of it, for whatever reason that is. And we would need buy-in from not only Clarkson residents, but using Councilmember Hopkins' example of the North DeKalb Mall area. Uh, if we were going to annex that area, we would need those residents and unincorporated DeKalb to, as she mentioned, to see that they would have uh more local governance uh input or have a better voice or more of a voice to influence policies and processes. And if we're not able to prove to them that they would benefit from that in Clarkston, uh, then we don't need to move forward with the annexation.
Thank you. Uh, Dean Moore, question is to you. Uh, several candidates had expressed support for annexation. Why should someone in unincorporated DeKalb County uh want to join the city of Clarkston? You have two minutes to make your case.
Um, I, I don't think anybody does want to join the city of Clarkson, particularly after our recent publicity with the firing of the city manager and hiring a city manager out of another troubled uh municipality. Uh, but I do want to say, this is the first election we've had two members uh up for election that came out of the areas that we annexed recently in the past, I guess it's been about eight years now. But uh, Dr. Jenkins is in a uh townhome uh project that we voted on back in twenty seventeen, I believe. And uh, we did the annexation twenty sixteen for that area on Church Street down to North Cater Road. We need to get our house in order before we start talking to people about doing this. The shenanigans of the mayor that called for annexation all the way to North DeKalb Mall was not well advised. We've got two areas, there were actually five areas originally, but we've got two areas that we've targeted down to Memorial Drive uh to um to annex, but like I say, with our bad services, our apartment complexes are in a shambles, so I'd like to see a, a housing authority to help us get them in order. We've been, uh, I, I've been working on those for uh thirteen years with a little success at getting good management in those apartments. But until we get our house in order and have something to show that we can actually protect the people and uh do uh projects of good land use, like Dr. Jenkins' townhome uh development. Um, people are going to object to us uh trying to take over their, their uh private property. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mark Perkins, several candidates expressed support for the idea of annexing more unincorporated areas into the city of Clarkston. Uh, you have two minutes to make your case. Why should somebody live in, uh, living in unincorporated DeKalb County want to join the city of Clarkston?
Yeah, it's a great question, um, and a challenging one. Um, you know, I think uh, it, it's already been mentioned, we've, we've not put our best foot forward publicly. Um, you know, over the last year and um, and a number of, uh, on a number of fronts. Um, I think uh fundamentally, as it's already been said, it's down to the will of the people. Um, my hope though is that through education and conversations, we can have a long-range view of this as a community. Um, you know, I think the example of North DeKalb Mall was brought up, that's a six hundred and twenty-five million dollar development that was opposed. You know, as we're all experiencing mileage rates increasing and a cost, rising cost of goods and services. From the community standpoint, you know, which I think there's two pieces, there's who wants to join us and who's already here. You know, we need to expand our tax base. And so when we miss out on opportunities like that to expand our tax base, we set up future generations of Clarkstonians to have to pay the bill for our lack of leadership and lack of foresight. You know, the best time to buy a property is not when it's, you know, six hundred and twenty-five million, it's when you can get it for much less than that and then continue to develop it. Um, I think we can both repair trust on those things and begin exploring again what options we have available for annexation. You know, if we don't annex, if we're not bringing people in, eventually, we're going to kind of be stuck with what we have here. And there's some good things there, but again, there's not a lot of room for expansion in terms of increasing the uh, the income that we have available to us as a city to handle our goods and services. For people who are interested in moving in or maybe on the fence or looking at everything that's, you know, hit the news lately and are saying, I don't want to test that. I think when we are at our best, what we offer is a personal relationship. I live three minutes from anywhere else in the city. So that representation, having a police department that can be anywhere in the city in three minutes. Um, you know, the, the green spaces that we have, the parks, the, you know, everything else, you know, that, those are reasons to, you know, to be in the city.
Thank you. Uh, Vice Mayor Johnson, starting with you again. Um, many of the candidates in our Q and A acknowledged that housing affordability is a problem, not just in Clarkston, but, but everywhere really, but we're talking about Clarkston, so that's where we'll keep our focus. Um, do you favor adopting inclusionary zoning that would require developers to set aside a certain percentage of new multifamily housing units as affordable units? You have two minutes.
I do, Dan. Um, that has been one of the things that we um have been trying to get developers to see it, and we have one development here already with that feature and that did allow a number of units. But I think that that's one of the ways that we're going to encourage affordable housing is to just basically work with the developer to put tiers. I think, I think Peachtree Creek gave us eight units and they were full before they finished half of the development. So that's very important, since we have no real estate um to build um much here. Anyway, I think that that would be a good incentive to allow um builders to designate at least a third of the unit. Well, I don't, I won't even say a third, but depending on the number, something. Because right now, um, we are in a spot where we need housing. We need our community to be met at least halfway when it comes to affordability. Um, a lot of the developments that we have going on now, Dan, are not for the community, it's for um what we call our new residents. Um, because some of the Um, because some of the, some of the council members can't afford some of the new development. So I think that would be very promising in this community to allow some form of assistance when it comes to making a way for affordable housing.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Hopkins, do you support inclusionary zoning that would require developers to set aside a certain percentage of, of multifamily developments as affordable? Two minutes.
Absolutely, I would. Um, I think that is only one aspect of a, a very complex problem of housing affordability. And, um, we have to define the term affordability more carefully because there's a lot of people who think, you know, if we take a single-family home and put a, a four-unit apartment building, a quadplex on it and drop the price a little bit, we're increasing affordability, but you're not. Because you're taking a home out of what was the owner-occupied market, maybe a working-class family with a moderate income that that house will become their primary investment for retirement. And turning it into four rental properties that an investor will have other people paying the equity on for the next thirty years. And in thirty years, you'll have forty families that have been, been paying rent for thirty years and have nothing, absolutely nothing to retire on. So I think, um, you know, some have said, well, younger people because housing is not the way to retirement anymore like it used to be, they're finding other ways to, uh, save for retirement. But the bottom line is people are going to be paying that thousand or two thousand dollars a month for housing one way or another, whether it's rent or whether it's a mortgage. But if it's rent, it's money down the drain. It's gone. If it's a mortgage, in thirty years, they will have a home. So we need to look at ways to encourage homeownership. Every house in Clarkston has one family that would like to live in it, that would like to own that home and ten investors that would like to buy it and rent it back to them. And that's one of the reasons prices are going up. It's not a housing shortage. It's an overload of investors and it's zoning laws that encourage uh, investors to come and build rental properties. And that's what I mean when I say I'm encouraging long-term wellbeing.
Thank you. Dr. Jenkins, do you support inclusionary zoning that would require developers to set aside units as affordable housing? Two minutes.
Yes. Uh, Clarkson has a very diverse population. Uh, we've got people here from different backgrounds, different cultures, different ethnicities. Uh, if we don't have, uh, affordable housing policy that promotes social economic diversity within our neighborhoods and our communities, uh, we can't expect that our residents will feel like they belong and that they feel included. Uh, I do think that affordable housing contributes to the social equity of Clarkston. Uh, it helps individuals from all walks of life be able to afford housing. Uh, helps reduce income inequality, promote equal opportunities, create equitable, a more equitable society as a whole for us. Uh, and it makes the overall safer community for us. It also helps to preserve Clarkston's cultural identity. So we know, uh, that we have a lot of different, uh, cultural roots and historical ties in our city. Uh, so that would also help to prevent with displacement, uh, help with, uh, slowing down gentrification and allow our citizens, our individ- citizens, uh, whether they are residents or individuals or families to stay in this community that they call home.
Thank you. Um, Councilmember Johnson just texted me and said that she's going to have to jump off. Uh, in deference to her, I would like to give her, uh, two quick minutes to make the closing statement and then we'll continue with the forum. Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you, Dan. Can you hear me?
I can hear you just fine.
All right. Okay, in my closing statement, I would like to just, um, let everyone know I will remain steadfast in my commitment to our community and the focus on my three top concerns, which are transparency. I firmly believe in an open and accountable government. Throughout my time in office, I've hosted community meetings where every resident could freely voice their opinion and concerns, ensuring that their voices were heard. And as far as public safety, I've worked tirelessly with council and the city government to strengthen our police department by coming up with ideas as far as going to the colleges and to the high schools to see if any students or young people had a desire to be police officers. Um, this included increasing pay, uh, police officers' pay to attract and retain the best talent, ensuring that our community remains a safe and secure place to live. And as far as economic development, I've been a driving force behind programs designed to support our local business owners by providing essential funds for business improvements. We bolstered our economy and encouraged growth. Additionally, I've provided, so, um, I proudly supported the development of the Newtown Center multi-unit um, development on Montreal In Market, which, um, which was a crucial step forward to ensuring affordable housing for our hand, hard-working residents. So as we move forward, I basically commit to continue working tirelessly on these crucial issues and more, always with the best interest of our community at heart. Um, with the support of the community, I will build an even brighter future, um, with the help of our community and council. We can build a even brighter future together. So I just wanted to, um, thank you, Dan, for hosting this forum. And good luck to the other candidates.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Johnson. Thank you for joining us. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Uh, question, uh, getting back to our question, uh, we'll start with Dean Moore here. Uh, do you support inclusionary zoning that would require developers to set aside a certain percentage of units as affordable? You have two minutes.
Sure. I mean, there's, uh, uh, there's a universal problem of affordability and any, uh, any uh, leg up we can get is, uh, is great. Now, we do have a, uh, development, as Deborah mentioned, it's being built right now with the ideas I have, but I'd like to see, and maybe with the housing authority, we could find uh, resources and options, but I'd like to see some of these, uh, decrepit developments. Uh, empty out, say, one of their units to move into the new unit. And with funding, uh, through different programs to keep the affordability intact, renovate that apartment building. And that sets them on a path to be able to hopscotch around there, uh, or piggyback around the, uh, development and empty another unit to fill that one when it gets renovated. And then they can keep renovating their, their apartments. Um, so yeah, I, I'm open to suggestion on any options that anybody can come up with to provide affordability for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Perkins, do you support inclusionary zoning that would require developers to set aside some units as affordable? Two minutes.
Yeah, thanks, Dan. Um, I think it's actually a complicated question. Um, there are a number of people who have, um, actually raised questions about that is, um, you know, as a way to increase affordability. Um, Dan Emmergluck, um, is one of them. He's the, uh, works at GSU as a hous- housing policy expert, wrote this book called Red Hot City. And one of the things that, you know, as I've sort of watched, you know, read some of his stuff, he brings up that I think is a challenge we need to consider this. Is that a lot of times when you talk about that percentage of affordable units, it's often incentivized through tax breaks and it's also temporary. You know, it's not, you know, at some point that ends and then you lose the, whatever affordability you gang through this unit, you can lose. Um, so I'm not overtly against it. I think we just need to be careful in how we engage and uh, making sure that our answer is actually going to produce true affordability. Um, and that's why I support, you know, gentle in- increases in density and diversifying our housing options. You know, we really only have two odds, um, as a municipality, as, as city governments to, you know, increase affordability. One is by increasing the options people have available, like making more of a competitive market for houses, doing things like allowing accessory dwelling units, letting people finish out, rent out their basements, things like that. Um, and, you know, uh, buying property ourselves and actually having an ownership state where we can direct it. You know, obviously there's pros and cons to both. Um, beyond that, the Georgia General Assembly doesn't give us a lot of power to control affordability. So when we talk about inclusionary zoning, I'm a hundred percent for it in ways that, um, you, you know, is, is done in step with where the community is. Um, but the, the reality is when we talk about homeownership, most houses now are going for three hundred thousand. So we, we really, when we talk about affordability, when we talk about people wanting to get into homes versus can they, that's a, that's a large gap. I think having a percentage of affordable units is a part of the solution, but it's not a hundred percent of the solution.
Thank you. Uh, I do want to note, it is eleven o'clock. I did budget ninety minutes for this forum. Are we all comfortable going another thirty minutes? We all got time for it? Thumbs up if yes. We got another thirty? Great, wonderful. So we got some more questions. Uh, starting with, uh, Councilmember Hopkins, what are your ideas for recruiting new businesses to Clarkston? And what kind of new businesses does Clarkston need? Two minutes.
Well, we just got, um, a brand-new, uh, development person with the city who has a lot of new and exciting disease, uh, ideas and is still putting together a plan to attract people. To me, the most important thing, uh, businesses is those that hire lots of employees. Right now, um, again, a huge part of our population are new Americans that are, have language barriers and are coming from various, uh, countries and are very often working at the chicken plants up in Gainesville, other employers like that that are willing to hire, uh, new Americans. And it would be really nice if we had places where they could work in Clarkston. I would like to see Clarkston be more of a uh, self-sufficient city where people did not have to drive, you know, fifty, seventy-five miles to get to work every day. I've got a few families on our block that are doing that. And so, uh, building, uh, bringing businesses that are friendly to labor. A lot of people are saying, well, we need more cafes and restaurants. Clarkson will never have a cafe culture. We will not be accursed. We will not be Decatur. And the reason is simply this, we have such a huge population that are, uh, have refugee status or asylum status or something similar. And our average household income is less than forty thousand a year. So we don't have the disposable income to support cafe culture. I am perfectly happy with that. When I first moved to Clarkston, our nightlife was someone posting on Nextdoor, bonfire Friday night, my backyard, bring wine. And that's how I met our current mayor. That's how I met a lot of our neighbors. Um, that is Clarkston nightlife because we're not going to have the disposable income. When people get educations, learn the language, they tend to move away. That's okay. I like to be the Ellis Island to the south.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Uh, Nextdoor culture. I don't, I don't know how people about that. Be real honest. Uh, but if, uh, while I'm, I'm, I'm talking because I gotta reset my timer. Um, if you're looking for a quality follow on Twitter, uh, I highly recommend Best of Nextdoor. And I will leave it at that. Uh, Doc, Dr. Jenkins, uh, the question is to you. Um, what are your ideas for recruiting new businesses to Clarkston and what kind of new businesses does Clarkston need? Two minutes.
So I agree with the notion that we want to maintain the diversity, uh, of Clarkston, right? We, we want to attract businesses, uh, that are going to cater to the diversities and interests of our residents. I don't agree that diversity, uh, means that the city residents are all lower income. Uh, I think that bringing in, uh, restaurants, different ethnic, uh, international cuisines that, uh, help us appreciate Clarkston's diverse population. Uh, one of those are, you know, eateries that include Ethiopian food, Vietnamese food, Indian food, uh, any type of international cuisines, uh, I think would help our labor market as well as stimulate our tax base. Uh, local market and grocery stores, we should be expanding those. And again, focusing on specialty ingredients and produce uh, that cater to the specific dietary preferences that, um, are part of our residents' needs. Uh, community centers and gathering spaces, businesses that are willing to incorporate these, uh, that will foster a sense of community and social interaction. Uh, small businesses obviously would be, uh, the ones that we would hope would come to Clarkston. Uh, and then of course, the arts and cultural piece. So again, going back to that piece about, uh, focusing on Clarkston's diversity. So supporting and attracting arts and cultural organizations that can enhance the cultural scene in Clarkson. So the art galleries, theaters.
Thank you. Uh, Dean Moore, the question is to you. What are your ideas for recruiting new businesses to Clarkston? And what kinds of businesses does Clarkston need? You have two minutes.
Well, I'm, I agree with the arts and culture, uh, aspect of our city that, uh, would serve to attract more businesses. That seems to be, uh, uh, a, a leading edge for a lot of other cities that have, uh, developed. Um, slowing down the traffic. We've lowered our, our, uh, speed limit to thirty miles per hour. That, uh, tends to, uh, popularize businesses as well. So, uh, we're, we're in the process of making those changes. We, uh, years ago decided to take control of our, um, uh, entrances into the city and do streetscapes and provide a, a, a better, um, doormat to get to the downtown area. As far as the businesses go, it's going to require disposable income. And, uh, I've, I've always encouraged people to better themselves, to make more money within their own, uh, qualifications and ranges. To be able to make the city great. Uh, we, we have done some development for higher-end, uh, residents. Uh, Dr. Jenkins is one of them. Uh, I hope he's got some disposable income to help our, uh, current businesses. And I think with those kind of successes, it, it automatically is going to, uh, uh, provide a, a better lead-in. And with a, uh, uh, business development guru in our staff, uh, they know, uh, all the ins and outs of better ways to do it. And I'm open to suggestions. So I look forward to working with, uh, with Lisa and the staff to, uh, bring businesses in. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Dean, I note in, in your last two answers, you specifically referred to Dr. Jenkins. Is there some, some issue we need to address between y'all that I don't know about or? Or Dr. Jenkins, do you need a minute to respond to any of this? Because I don't, I don't want to leave that out.
Uh, no, I mean, I don't have any issue with Dean. This is the first time I've ever interacted with him. Um, so.
Making sure I wasn't missing some subtext.
I don't know if it's because he's voted against the area that I lived in. I don't know if that's it or not, but, uh, no, I have.
Dean, do you?
Yes, absolutely. Uh, I, I, I think it's a blessing. Uh, that was a project that, that I did help develop. And I was very much in favor of it. And we've had some developments since then. It was not successful. Uh, we've got a, uh, a PVC graveyard down in the East Avenue that was not very well thought out. We, we planned this development very well and that location is great and it's attracted people like Dr. Jenkins to come to the city, which I'm saying, like I'm saying, we need people with disposable income. And I, I feel that the cost of those townhouses was not a Clarkston range. Nobody in Clarkston could afford those, but that's not the point. We're not here to, to uh, make more homes for people that live here, although that would be great if we could. We need to get more people into Clarkston. So I'm very proud of that development. Thank you, Dr. Jenkins, for, for running for office. Thank you.
Great. Glad we're all square. Uh, Mark Perkins, uh, the question is to you. What are your ideas to attract new businesses to Clarkston? And what kinds of new businesses does Clarkston need? You have two minutes.
Thanks. Um, so first I want to address a comment on us not being a cafe culture. Um, I can think of like three, you know, four cafes right off the top of my head. Milwaukee Coffee, Lambodina Cafe, Abyssinia Cafe, uh, Savannah Cafe unfortunately recently closed. We've got Refuge Coffee. We actually do have disposable income within the city. Um, and, uh, you, you know, I think any new development, um, it, we need to find a balance of making sure that we continue to support our existing businesses, you know, and that, that cater to our diverse, you know, community. Um, and, and make them, you know, help people who are interested in becoming resilient, you know, to rising costs, um, become resilient, you know? Um, one of the things I look for in businesses is whether or not the owner has a developmental mindset. You know, are they, um, you know, able or willing to continue to grow and adapt to the changing market? Um, and I think as, as leaders, whether elected or not, they're just as, as members of the city, it's important to support businesses who have that mindset. Um, just with our dollars. Um, a lot of things that I would like to see is us leveraging, uh, you, you know, we mentioned sort of the entrances to the city. We are right next to the path that goes from Stone Mountain all the way into Decatur. You know, that's a huge asset. We, you know, we have this diverse food culture. And so I think getting more people into the city, um, you know, to spend their tax dollars, you know, or not their tax dollars, but spend their income here, um, i- is a part of it. And so I think supporting existing businesses through making, uh, permitting processes more accessible, uh, simpler. providing them with resources, working with our economic planning, you know, director, things like that are really important. I would like to see more family-friendly spaces, more outdoor spaces. Avondale and Decatur and even Stone Mountain are doing a great job with some of the spaces that they have. I love to see some spots where people can bring their families, you know, their dogs and, and play outside and enjoy a meal, everything we have to offer.
I hear town greens are really, really hot right now. A lot, a lot of, a lot of cities are doing them. So just throwing that out there. It's, it's, it's what the cool people are doing. So moving right along. Starting with Councilmember Hopkins, do you think diversity and inclusion are important in local government? And what will you do to promote diversity and inclusion if you are re-elected? You have two minutes.
Well, when I was first elected, we have six standing advisory cities in the city of Clarkson. And being billed multiple times is the most diverse square mile in America, but we had nothing for diversity and inclusion. I created a diverse, equity, opportunity and inclusion committee, standing advisory committee. And also, I know it would appear strange, but founded the Clarkson Juneteenth Celebration. The most critical thing right now is translations in everything of the city services. This is a debate that's been going on for a few years now. There should be, although our police all have that button on their chest that a person can speak a few words in any language and it will tell them what language they're speaking and they can get a live translator. There needs to be flyers in the courthouse in at least the top fifteen languages, advising people of what their rights are so far as getting a translator when they go to court. That hasn't happened yet, but it's in process. And everything on our website, so far as we have a weatherization program, rental assistance, anything that the city offers to make our residents' lives easier, needs to be translated. We are starting right now on the budget process for next year and translations needs to be a line item separate from all others because it just gets forgotten about if it's bundled in with other departments' costs. So I think every department manager should just know there is a special thing. Let's get this translated to make sure everybody is aware of the opportunities that Clarkson offers. It does no good to offer people things that we really want them to take advantage of, like COVID assistance, if they don't know it's available.
Thank you. Dr. Jenkins, the question is to you. Do you think diversity and inclusion are important in local government? And what will you do to promote diversity and inclusion if you are elected? You have two minutes.
Yeah, absolutely. Diversity and inclusion are crucial pillars of a thriving and representative local government. They ensure that all voices and perspectives are heard, valued and taken into account when making decisions that affect our community. As an elected city councilman, I'd have the power to champion that diversity and promote inclusion in various ways, including for the higher income residents of the community where I serve as HOA president. I would also actively seek diverse candidates for city committees and city boards and leadership positions. That includes folks from different backgrounds, different cultures and experiences that could participate in local government and bring their unique perspectives to the table. So I think as a city council, council has the ability to foster an environment of open dialogue and collaboration where those diverse residents are able to voice their concerns, share their ideas and then actively participate in the decision-making process. And again, all those platforms should be inclusive, accessible, and they should encourage diverse participation. Residents should be encouraged to participate in local government and throughout our community, regardless of their background, their identity, their location within the city. We need to advocate for policies and policies that promote equal opportunities, anti-discrimination measures, which we already have some in place, again with the affordable housing piece and accessible services for everyone in our community.
Thank you. Dean Moore, the question is to you. Do you think diversity and inclusion are important in local government? And what will you do to promote diversity and inclusion if you are elected? You have two minutes.
Yeah, absolutely. It's very important. Everybody needs to be included. That's why I say it's our, our most valuable asset is our people, no matter where they come from or wherever they're going. While they're here in Clarkson, we need to make them aware of what's going on and that's going to include getting the word out. I have trouble getting information about what's upcoming in the city. And I think there needs to be a, a central location where everybody can go to, to come up with the the information for different programs we have, different meetings we have and, and areas to provide feedback. So I'm looking forward to getting involved in that again. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Perkins, question to you. Do you think diversity and inclusion are important in local government? And what will you do to promote diversity and inclusion if you are elected? You have two minutes.
Thanks, Dan. Now, I think when we talk about diversity and inclusion, it really brings up a question. What do we mean by that? You know, it, it can be sort of a green-washed thing if, if we talk about environmental, you know, the environment or sustainability. You know, everyone is doing it and talking about it, but when you start looking under the hood with organizations, you know, and, and government, you know, the reality a lot of times breaks down. You know, so when we look at Clarkson, we a lot of times talk about our cultural diversity. But even in this conversation, you know, there's, there's sure ethnic and cultural diversity. We also talked about socioeconomic diversity. There's generational diversity. There's like English literacy. That's a diversity component of diversity and inclusion. And even the culture within which we have discussions differs, you know, among different groups, you know? And so I think when we talk about inclusivity, we need to make sure that our decisions are being informed by a representative group of our community. You know, and so what I'd like to see us do is begin gathering a little more demographic information when we make decisions. Like how do we, you know, are we changing our zoning code? Like how do we, you know, do we need to readdress our charter? Is, are the people that we're talking to a small group that is representative of one percent of the community? Or is it truly a representative group of the entire community? You know, translation services is a great start, but I think my point is it's like, it's not the, you know, it's a critical point, but it's not the only thing we have to think about. And so I think, you know, really informing our decisions through making sure that the people we're talking to do represent the community versus a small group of, you know, whoever we happen to invite is important. A small way I did that when we were doing our zoning rewrite is we looked at areas that weren't represented in our, in our feedback with, with the consulting company we, we worked with. And I worked with a number of people to try and pass out flyers to get people involved, to get people signing on to those surveys, you know, filling out the surveys, attending town hall meetings and things like that. So I hope to continue that if the people elect me.
Thank you. And we're at the conclusion of this forum. Thank you, everybody, for joining us. We're gonna give each candidate two minutes to make a closing statement. We'll start with Councilmember Hopkins. You have two minutes to make your closing statement.
Dan, I thank you for the forum and actually all that you've done for Clarkson in the last few months. I know everybody complains we shouldn't hear about it from the press, but the press has helped us a lot in the last few months and I really do appreciate that. I think Clarkson is a beautiful town. I've lived here for more than ten years. I think I'm going on twelve years now. And I want to help preserve that for the people of Clarkson. It is really important that we develop our community space, outdoor space. Clarkson has just purchased a couple of acres near the post office that we intend to develop as a green space because we don't have anything park for children on that side of Clarkson. And there is a huge amount of our population, several apartment complexes up Montreal that need to see a little more love in the way of, of parks and, and green space. And so we're working on that and I really hope to continue to develop a safe, walkable space where everybody can be proud and everybody can enjoy and that represents the ideas of everybody who lives here. Thank you.
Dr. Jenkins, you have two minutes to make your closing statement.
So thank you for hosting this forum, Dan, and, and all the forums. I know you had a very busy week. So what I'll say is that my vision for Clarkson is one of inclusivity, unity and progress. I believe that if we harness the power of our diversity, we can transform it into our greatest strength. I will advocate for policies that support social equity, affordable housing and economic opportunities for all of our residents. I think that, you know, if we work together, we can build a community that embraces and celebrates our differences. And we can also foster an environment where everyone feels valued and respected. I'm in favor of promoting an entrepreneurial, entrepreneurial spirit that thrives. And I will actively engage with local businesses and provide support as a city council member. By attracting diverse businesses, I think that reflect our community's needs and desires. We can create a vibrant economy that benefits all of our residents. I hope that we're able to embark on this journey together and that we all share a vision of thriving and inclusive and a sustainable community. Thank you.
Thank you. Dean Moore, you have two minutes to make your closing statement.
Yes, we've got some housekeeping to do in our staff and some of our departments and whatnot. And we've got a lot of housekeeping or getting the house in order with our properties. Recently, we've tried to get some zoning changed and just want to caution people to be very considerate about the, the zoning. The new members coming into the council and the current council members, I just want to let you know that projects do take a long time. The property that Laura mentioned that we bought over there by the Public Works Department, I suggested that back in twenty thirteen that we do that. And it's a gateway to the French Forest Park that we're now working on a path along South Fork of Peachtree Creek, which was another suggestion I made that ten years later, we're looking at actually doing that. We had a road diet on the North Indian Creek that I conceived in twenty eleven that was done in twenty fourteen. So projects take a long time. We've got a lot to do here. I want to keep having ideas on making improvements and want the opportunity to be in a position with the city council to help lead the council into a higher ground. So I hope that I get elected and I'm glad to see other people taking interest. Like the past two or three elections we've had, we've had about eight people showing up. And Dan, I particularly want to thank you for taking my phone calls and talking to me about the issues with Clarkson and, and keeping people straight here with information and for providing these forums. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mark Perkins, two minutes to make your closing statement.
Thank you, Dan. And just, so I'm not the lone one that doesn't thank you guys. I know you and the rest of the Decaters team do put a lot of work into organizing these things. So just want to also join in the voices, thanking you guys for doing this. I think it's really important that people hear from us and get to know us and this is one of the ways to do that. As I said before, you know, I think one of the big pieces that's holding, you know, Carson back, not that we haven't done good things, but again, it comes back to, you know, having a culture on our council that is able to solve complex problems and is able to listen well, is able to engage in creative, innovative thinking. And, and that's something that while we, you know, have made some progress, I, I do think it's actually taking longer than it has to be. You know, we've, a lot of our leadership has come too little, too late, whether it's, you know, rushing to try and make our police salaries competitive or kind of throwing things together at the last minute with some of our grant applications and, and other funding opportunities that the city has. Our community is small and that's a beautiful thing about it, but we are incredibly diverse. And when you're small and diverse and, you know, as dynamic a community as we are, being agile is really important. Having a leadership culture with people who can listen, who can solve problems creatively, who know how to maximize resources rather than wasting hundreds of thousands of dollars, getting rid of people or, you know, paying for a zoning rewrite that, you know, where we have ultimately rejected everything that experts recommended. That's a waste of our time and money. And so I hope if, if elected, that I can better represent the community in terms of how we are engaging in those things, how we're using our resources and the culture that we're creating. City government doesn't have to be miserable. You know, I would love to have more than eight people. I'd love to have sixty people trying to run because it's that fun. Thanks, Dan.
Thank you. And that is the conclusion of the Decatersh.com forum for Clarkson City Council. Election is going to be November seventh. Early voting is gonna start October sixteenth. And if I may, just take a personal moment here, you know, Clarkson is, is my neighbor. I vote at that library every time I early vote. That's where I take my son to pick out books on the weekends. We're trying to encourage his reading. Brockett Pub has some of the best wings in town. That, that place has been kind of low-key rocking it for a while. And all that is to say, Clarkson is my neighbor and it's, and it's a beautiful community. And it's a, it's a great narrative, but at times Clarkson's story has not matched its narrative. And there is a thing we like to say at Decatersh, maybe it sounds corny, but I, I do believe it's true that good government is good for everyone. And Clarkson is a beautiful community and it deserves good government and it deserves better government than it has gotten over the last couple of years. And that's not, that, that's a shared thing. That's, I won't put that at the feet of any one person. That's a shared community problem that you all should think about. But we're praying for y'all at Decatersh. You know, we, we want, we do sincerely want the best for Clarkson because Clarkson is an important part of our community and it has a lot of potential. And I hope, whatever the outcome of this election, that a government is elected that can help Clarkson realize that potential. If you value the opportunities that we have given you throughout this municipal election season to hear from these candidates, I would encourage you to visit, support yourlocalnews.com, support mylocalnews.com, support ourlocalnews.com. I've bought all the URLs in that regard. And go to our support page. We are having a fall fundraiser. Covering elections and putting them, that coverage on the internet for free is not cheap. It does cost money. And because we have to still pay the people who are going to the meetings as well. So if this matters to you, if you appreciated this opportunity, please take a moment and pitch in your fall fundraiser. We could really use the help. And with that, I will remind people again, elections are November seventh. Early voting is October sixteenth. You can find all of our elections coverage at Decatershvotes.com. It's Decatershvotes.com. So please check it out. And with that, I will thank you all for joining us. Thank you for your interest in public service. And I hope you have a great rest of your day. Bye-bye, everybody.
Thanks, Dan. Thanks, everyone.